Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bestia Beal Shepherd.
Present.
Commissioner Isaac Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Royce Reeves Senior.
Here.
Chairman Joshua Darasaw.
Live and present, thank you ma'am. Alright. At this time, we'll have approval of the agenda for today. It's been properly moved in second that we approve the agenda for today. All in favor, let it be known by voiceful, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, agenda approved. Approval of budget meeting minutes from May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four.
To whom?
Sir.
It's been properly moved in second that we approve the budget minute meetings from May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four. All in favor, let it be known by voiceful, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes approved. Approval of regular minute meeting, meeting minutes, June fourth, two thousand twenty four. It's been properly moved in second that we approve the regular meeting minutes from June fourth meeting, two thousand twenty four. All in favor, let it be known by voiceful, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation of retired Sergeant Fred Paul.
Turn this around. You know, the first thing that I always say when I talk to people about our department is that we have good people, really good. And Fred Paul was one of our very best. You were always dedicated, hardworking, you always led by example. Retired Sergeant Paul gave the city thirty years and we are all better because of it. So it is my pleasure to present you with this plaque. Fire Service Retirement Award Thirty Years Presented to Retired Sergeant Frederick B. Paul, nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and twenty-four, for his dedicated service to the Cordial Fire Department.
Good morning, your friend.
Love y'all too. I just wanna thank everybody for all the support that you gave me. I can't name everybody, but you had so much support and I so appreciate it.
I ain't near about tall enough to do that.
It is second one.
Yeah.
We from, we from the same, we from Sunset Home.
Okay.
Same hood.
Same hood.
Thank you, guys.
Alright.
Thank you sir for your service.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
How about the cowboy?
Every, every year.
Alright, uh. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation about, I think, audit. Do you have a representative? Okay, how you doing? Mr. Elliott?
Yeah. Well, I think y'all should have a. Y'all should have two different documents in front of you, two different reports bound. One should be your, you know, the setup audit statements for the year. And the other one should be your ADNA, your auditors, discussion and analysis. That's gonna be pretty much what I'm gonna be presenting off of, just to, you know, keep it concise and try to keep it, you know, hit the highlights of everything you need to know. Alright, so jumping into the, oh yeah, before I go any further, thank y'all for having me this morning. I appreciate it. I'll try to keep y'all's, you know, try to keep it short and brief as possible. I know your time is important. Alright, jumping straight into it. On page one, on the ADNA, you can kinda see this kind of an outline of how I'm gonna present through, you know, through the, uh, presentation. There's, you know, I might jump around, but for most part, this is, you know, the manner I'm gonna go about it. On page two, you can see some stats about the firm in general. Talks about, a little bit about, you know, how long we've been, how long we've been doing this, how many clients we serve throughout the year, you know, things of that nature. There's some good information if you wanna take a look at it. I won't dive into that too much further. And there's a few on page three, there's some other industries we also provide, you know, some services we provide as well. We can talk about that later if you need to. Alright, jumping straight into it on page four, as a part of the audit, we, you know, there was, there is an independent auditor's report. And I'm glad to say that we were able to provide a unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, which is the highest level of, you know, assurance we can give to you as, and your external auditors, and that is a good thing. That's, you know, that's the highest level you want, for sure. You don't want anything else besides that. Alright, so you jump over to page five. Is it your over, your overview, which you have right there, overview of financial statements? The main area I'm gonna probably keep my presentation to regarding the financial statements, the numbers will be with the general fund. The general fund is, you know, is like, is the heart and soul of the city. It's the majority of your revenues and your expenditures and your operations, so it only makes sense to, you know, kinda keep it there. Alright, so you can see there's gonna be a couple graphs over the next two or three pages or four pages that kinda, you know, show something, make it a little easier to, you know, read. First ones about the general fund revenues, as you can see, seven point five million of that is from taxes. So that add up, your total revenues is eleven million dollars. So seven point five million of that, which is about sixty-seven percent of your revenues, come from taxes, which that, that includes property taxes, sales taxes, other, other taxes, insurance premium taxes. It's not just property taxes if y'all were thinking that. But this is very, you know, and this is very comparable to the previous year. No significant jumps or, you know, increases, which is also a good thing. This is also very common for your, how your allocation is of sixty-seven percent. It's very common for a city of your size. So nothing, you know, that jumps off the page there. Follow me on page six. There's another graph talking about the general fund expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. This also shows where, you know, the majority of your expenses are for public safety. Follow it quickly, you know, closer behind is the public works. Your overall expenditures are nearly, are a little over eleven million dollars. That's very common for your, you know, public safety. There's nothing unusual there. In public safety, that includes fire, police department and things of that nature. And for your public works, that includes your highways and streets department as well. Everything in that area is very, very comparable to last year and nothing jumps off the page to be alarmed about. When we're talking about this, we also like to make sure we bring up your balance sheet. I just kinda hit on the highlights of, your, uh, I just kinda hit on the highlights of your income statement, which is your revenues, expenses of the general fund. For the, now that, we try to bring that into the balance sheet. What we like to also, you know, we like to always compare the expenditures to your fund balance, which your fund balance is the difference between your assets and your liabilities. Your assets totaled three point six million and your liabilities totaled five hundred thousand dollars. That ends you, you end up with a three million dollar fund balance. That is an improvement from last year of your fund balance. It is very liquid, the majority, I mean, over sixty percent of that is in cash and investments, and that is also a good thing. When you're thinking about that, so also we'd like to make one other note, I'll jump to that in a minute, I'd like to make one other thing we'd like, you know, bring up about your expenses compared to your fund balance. Your revenue, your expenses equate to about nine hundred seventy thousand dollars a month for the entire year. So when you consider that, you compare that to your fund balance, the city's fund balance could cover essentially a little over three months of expenses. So I mean, I mean, that is, you know, with that being said, it is recommended that a city with a six thirty year end try to strive for closer to four months. That allows you to get closer to your next, you know, next round of property taxes, which usually is around November, October, November. I mean, you, that's also been an improvement from last year, so that's a good thing. So I think, you know, you are technically, you are moving in the right direction, so that's what you want. Also, I mean. Then we jump over, there's, I'm gonna go to that page she's at now, page seven. This also shows a little bit about the fund balance I was just talking about. As you can see here, it's clearly noticeable a steady improvement over the last five years. Also, what you wanna see. And you can see down here, on the bottom, the bottom graph, there is a, you can kinda see the increases and decreases of your fund balance over the last five years. Overall, you have had a collective improvement increase of a million dollars, which is good. That's what you wanna do, you're moving in the right direction, again. Also, some other items we wanna make sure we notate, you know, bring up during this meeting, that's not on, not in the, not in your ADNA, is that the, uh, general fund. Your actual expenditures were less than your budgeted amounts for the year, so that's a good thing. You spent less than you budgeted, so that's always something you wanna see. That's not always the case at a lot of governments, but, you know, it is here for this one. Also, across all your governmental funds, you all, every single one of them had a. It was an, there was an increase altogether. Your fund balance for all your governmental funds increased for the year of twenty twenty-three. Also a good thing. Just wanna make sure to notate some of those items. Also, when you jump it over, there's another on page eight, some other information that we're required to communicate about the audit. We don't, we, you know, we like to try to bring this up to y'all, but this is information that you can flip through as you see fit, nothing significant. But I might, I like to make sure to notate a few of those items. We're required, not, document, there was no disagreements with management, no independence issues, no uncorrected misstatements. All adjustments have been posted for the year. Everything, you know, was good altogether. We also, that's one thing we wanna bring up. And then also with me, there's, there were some, we definitely, we had some findings this year from last year, but they were also more or less the same as last year. The reason why they were not, they were, they, they're not as bad as they were last year. They weren't, they have made improvements. It's gotten, it's gotten better from last year, but the issue was, the majority of the year had passed by before we jumped back into the audit and they were able to issue, they were able to resolve the previous year's audit issues. So basically, I think after talking with Angela and some of the resources she has going on right now, that, you know, some, you know, plans she has implemented, I don't think this is gonna be a finding next year, so I think, you know, I'm hope, you know, we're hopeful that that's gonna be resolved. You can see the two are about, you know, one's about cash, one's about capital assets, and the other is about inter-fund balances, which is, nothing, nothing out here is, you know, we just, we were required to have this finding if, you know, a certain amount, if your adjustment is over a certain specific amount. And as it stands during the year, we had to, these, you know, resulted in three different findings. I think these will be resolved next year and, um, I think it's something that we should be, you know, concerned about right now. Also, you'll, you can see there's some new upcoming GAZI standards, nothing, you know, I don't think for the majority of these will have an effect on the city, but it's something, you know, to be aware of and, you know, for the upcoming few years. Also, you know, that's, for the most part, there's some other information back here in the very back, talking about, that me and Angela brought up, their CPE that, you know, I think in the past, your finance department has. We offer free continuing education for our clients, and we can talk about that later, but for the most part, that's all I have for the presentation unless y'all had any other questions. And if not, thank you for your time, and I wanna also make sure to thank, uh, Ms. Angela and her finance team for all the, their hard work they did during this audit.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Elliott, any questions for Mr. Elliott?
Alright, thank y'all.
There's no speaker appearances, our speaker has signed up. Alright, at this time, we're going to our department, goals and accomplishments, starting with, um, Mr. Hill, any advancement?
Uh, good morning, everyone. I would, uh, like to go with the goals and accomplishments for this, uh, upcoming, um, time period. So my first goal was to, uh, attend a propel meeting to discuss any progress and to strategize on, you know, some of the projects that we have going forward. Attended that meeting on June the sixth and participated in a variety of groups. And, uh, things are progressing very well with, uh, the propel program and the various committees. Goal number two was to attend a land bank meeting and understand the goals and objectives for operating and property acquisition, property dispersment and the like. So I had a meeting, I attended a meeting on June the eleventh, um, to understand the structure of the land bank here and what the objectives are. During that meeting, um, the land bank authority approved me to be the new executive director for the land bank. I'm honored and, uh, will serve you very well there, I hope. Um, that is my goal. We'll talk about some of the initiatives that we are, that I'm trying to put in place to help, uh, progress the land bank in probably our next meeting. With the electric cities of Georgia staff and discuss, uh, programs and resources that are available to support some of the initiatives that we have, um, here in the city. And, uh, scheduled that meeting for June the tenth, uh, with two of the people from that organization. We met, we talked about potential projects and some, uh, possible grant funding for some of the objectives that we have. And we are gonna have a follow-up meeting, uh, in the next, um, probably two, three. Goal number four was to meet with the faith-based community. There's a monthly meeting scheduled and, uh, last meeting, I think we had seven people. This time we had about twelve, so know that, uh, the faith-based community is coming out, they're coming together. And, uh, so the plan was to co-host that with Ricky Smar, who is one of the ministers in that, uh, alliance as well as the social media, uh, department head for the city. We talked about various things that, um, the faith-based community could do to kinda coalesce and bring the community together. And, um, in that meeting, there were several objectives that were identified and then several projects that they will be bringing to the table and we'll discuss, uh, probably in our next meeting. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Hill, thank you.
Yes, it's finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have a copy of our report. I don't have, I really don't have anything to add, but I do wanna point out that we are continuing to collect delinquent property taxes and business license. So that's all I have. You have any questions?
Any questions for finance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Satisfied? Good morning to you.
Good morning. Goals, as always, to provide the best possible service to the citizens and visitors of Cordial. For accomplishments, um, we are working with human resources to implement a pre-employment functional fitness test as part of our hiring process. Fire Services, um, is, is very fitness oriented, and so that's an important function that, that we like to get into the hiring process. We also completed three, one per shift, pre-planning tours at Chris Regional Hospital. It's just part of their ER expansion. We wanna keep up to date as to what's going on over there. Also, we are teaching a satellite class this week, it's a first responder class. We're partnering with Georgia Public Safety Trans Center and, um, South Georgia Technical College. It's a forty-hour class. We're using Jipstick curriculum. It will be a Jipstick certification class, and it's a big step for us. It's the first time that they've allowed us to teach a satellite class. We've got nine Cordial firefighters, um, two from Chris County Fire Department. And the advantage of this is if we can continue to do this in the future, we can teach classes, certificate classes here and not have the expense of going to per side. So it's a big step, and so I'm proud of that. Our training officer is really hitting the ground running, and this is, this is a big deal. And then finally, our HIZ Alert report for last month. Um, we ran a total of sixty-nine calls through HIZ Alert. The alerting system alerted one thousand one hundred and seventy-two drivers within a mile radius that we were either approaching or we were on scene in front of them, and our average response time was two point eight minutes. That's all I have.
Any questions for our fire chief? Thank you, chief. Alright, how is the mayor doing? Good morning to you.
There's our commissioners, admirers, for today. Our first item on, um, our report is the Court of Estart, Estart Preservation Commission. And the goal was to start at six o'clock, and so the members found that agreement to start the meeting at six o'clock versus at four, so more members could attend the meetings. And our Board of Zarden Appeals, we will hold a meeting on Friday, June twenty-eighth at ten AM for the Board of Zarden and Appeals. And that's, um, in reference to a lot of requests from, uh, service stations on, in the HC district. So that has been done. And our Community Home Improvement Program, which is initiative chip program, that was accomplished. We received a grant of five hundred thousand dollars to do housing if they're in the target area, so that's a very good accomplishment for us, on the chip program. And our plan is on an authority commission. The pub, a public hearing will be held on July twenty-fifth at ten AM. Property owner Harry Patel High Tush LLC is requesting to amend the property zone parcel ID C three nine zero zero six from R four, multifamily residential to highway commercial. The property is located south of the newly constructed quick trip on Sixth Avenue. And that's right on hand. Unless you have some questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kendra? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, it's moving.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. If you have not reported your package, just kinda highlights things over here. First, under our, our improved and improvement potential goals, all our job vacancies are now being listed with WorkSource Georgia, along with GOGA, which is municipal association. Website A and D, we're actively recruiting right now for our finance department, for our utility bill clerk down there, and have received quite a few, um, candidates for that position. The recruitment materials from Mop Dog have been received. This includes, uh, the ability to create flyers, rat cards, posters, along with website headers. That material was provided with stock photos. Mr. Smar has the ability to, um, to insert actual photos, or photos of actual employees. So, uh, we're gonna do that to, uh, to add as an outreach to the public so they can see people that they can know on these posters, to encourage them to come and work with the city. And then, uh, we have also hired a plant operator in a wastewater treatment plant and also extended a conditional offer for plant operators in that department as well. The Go Sun Smart Georgia Program kickoff meeting is today. I have a Zoom meeting with Irene Ajayi, I hope I pronounced that correctly, at Ever University. We have been selected to participate in the June through September studies, so look forward to that kickoff meeting and having that underway. And then lastly, um, week before last, I had an opportunity to attend the Georgia Local Government Personnel Association Spring Conference in Athens, um, June fourth and Tuesday. Very informative conference. I appreciate that opportunity. And that's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
Any questions for HR? Yes, it's municipal court.
The goals for the municipal court, uh, same as always, is to report accurate and complete information for the court and public. Complete, to complete the court document for the judge in a timely manner. Accomplishments, it was that we got everything done.
Any questions for municipal court, the audit? She said no, so thank you. Um, this is Police Animal Control, Cole White.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Morning. Just hit the highlights. I'll start with the police department. As always, at least, like I said, for the year, I like to come up with goals. We come up with goals with the police department and then report on our accomplishments and how we advance towards that achieving that goal. First one is, uh, professional law enforcement, provide professional law enforcement through our hiring process, training and self-accountability. Uh, what we've been doing is going over all of our high liability policies, making sure that they're still, uh, up to date and, uh, that they follow the latest, uh, trends in law enforcement, uh, standards. We've also, uh, are, as far as attracting more officers, we've seen a substantial increase when it comes to, uh, interest in applying for the position of police officer, which is a very positive thing. I could say that not many agencies or, many agencies are having a hard time doing that, so, uh, we're doing something right when it comes to that. Uh, we're also looking out, rolling out new technology by the end of the month. Uh, a lot of our officers are definitely excited to, to use, will be the first agency in the area actually to have these, this new technology, the Taser ten, and, uh, it's coming out this month, so looking forward to unveiling that. Connecting to the community, uh, through community events. We have upcoming Coffee with the Cop event, that's, uh, June twenty-fourth, from seven thirty to eight thirty at Hardee's. I invite everybody to come out and enjoy. And, uh, basically advancements towards becoming state certified. We're also reviewing, uh, our policies and trying to make them, uh, compliant with state certifications so then we can roll out that program as well, uh, which that's a, a big undertaking, but we're working hard on that, so that's all I have for the police department.
Alright, any questions for police?
Alright, code, code enforcement, or code, code compliance, um, I can, just gonna hit some highlights on, on this one. We're transitioning more from an educational and trying to bring awareness to a more enforcement side. What we're finding is that we're just constantly hitting brick walls when it comes to the compliance. I just asked the citizens that, you know, that we're all in this together as far as keeping the city clean and we don't necessarily wanna be the bad guys, but in the same token, we wanna make sure the city is clean. So we have basically transitioned, uh, and issued more citations. What we've noticed is that there's more dumping in the alleys, that has increased. After they've been cleaned, they're now dumping more in the alleys, so we've issued citations on that. In the last two weeks, we've issued three citations for illegal tire dumping. So again, uh, code compliance is very active. We are issuing citations. Anything that you see, please report it, um, through the channels, through our, our code compliance division, and we will address them as soon as possible. Again, we're trying to hold people accountable for this, but we need the community's help. That's all I have for code compliance.
Any questions for code compliance?
Alright, with animal control, we have purchased, uh, flooring as far as keeping the, uh, making the shelter more friendly, uh, dog. We have purchased flooring as far as keeping the, making the shelter more friendly adoption environment. We purchased flooring and hope to get it in this week, during sometime during this week. Big issue that we have at the shelter is we have updated our systems. There's a lot of web-based systems that we have as far as, you know, for making charges when people are adopting animals, even just getting and posting stuff on the internet. We're having a huge problem with the Wi-Fi at the shelter, and so we're not able to get those systems onboard because of the problems. We're also having some issues with our phone systems out there, which is basically having a negative impact on production. They're having to come to the police department and, and do a lot of their work. They're having to split the time between the shelter and the police department in order to get their work done. So hopefully we can get that problem situated soon. Another positive thing, though, I like to end with a positive, is we applied for a ten thousand dollar grant for dog and cat sterilizations. We were awarded a grant or that grant. I'm not sure if we were awarded the full amount. They haven't come out with exactly what we were awarded, but we did win that grant. Hopefully it's the, the full amount. So we'd be able to offer cat and dog sterilization free. That's what that grant is basically for. So that's all I have for animal control.
Nice. Thank you. Any questions for animal control?
We're not operational now. We do a twelve time because of what?
Six. Yes, there is. There was a parvo outbreak at the animal shelter. That's not something that, that, I mean, that's, that happens from time to time, unfortunately. I believe we're opening up on Thursday. They're having to clean the whole shelter, and then they're having to retest to make sure there's no more parvo. It's a process, but yeah, I believe we're opening that up on Thursday. Glad you brought that up.
Thank you. This is Public Works.
I don't have anything, I don't any updates on goals and accomplishments, but getting myself a little word, a couple of things that are going on. We're currently taking bids on dredging all our holding ponds. And what we're trying to do is do it correctly this time. We're gonna have to do a lot of, we're gonna have to get a lot of mud out of these ponds. Anyway, I'll be coming back, y'all, when we get, we get all the bids, y'all. And we're also getting bids on the side mower that y'all been wanting us to purchase. And we're getting bids on that. We're gonna have some more demos on that, and we're also getting bids on the back of it. And I'd like to thank the police department, code department for their diligence and helping to clean up the city for this lack of difference. Really is. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Public Works? Thank you. All right, social media?
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, chamber, members of the City Commission, City Manager Ready. You have my report. Just want to highlight a couple of things very quickly. Thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to attend the Digital Small Business Development Center at their digital marketing boot camp. That'll be Monday in Mulford at Southern Regional Technical College from nine to noon. Looking forward to attending that and collaborating with contemporaries that I will be meeting there also in October through the Georgia Municipal Association. That particular seminar in Athens is coming up, and I'm looking forward to attending that. Beyond that, you know that the website team is diligently, diligently working on the website. We went through a process of comments on the first submission from Granicus. We submitted that last week, received an email from Keon Miller late yesterday afternoon. First revision has been sent. All of the comments have been duly noted and sent to the revision team. We should be seeing revision one, getting a link to that. He says possibly Thursday, and so I'll be sending that out for the members of the team to take a look at. And then we'll go into revision two. We'll have the opportunity to comment on the revisions that have been made. We get three revisions in that. Beyond that, the Chamber of Commerce let me know this morning that there is a ribbon cutting for the Watermelon Festival, seventy-fifth edition. It is Thursday morning at nine o'clock at the Chamber of Commerce. I'll be attending that, and our community advancement manager, Mr. Hill, will be attending that as well. Invite anyone from the city who is available that could go to be there for that. And other than that, Commissioners, that is my report.
All right, any questions for social media marketing? Thank you, sir. All right, UCNT is there? How you doing?
Good morning. How y'all? Y'all have my report. The only thing I really want to add to it is we've finally gotten slowed down less than three million gallons this week. We're gonna get some necessary maintenance done that we keep getting, having to put off because of another inch of rain. So we look forward to having a pretty good week this week, and I, y'all probably know or have seen the leak at Twenty Fourth Avenue well. It was bad. It's the main line going from the well into the system. It had a hole about as big as a silver dollar in it. So Public Works, bless them, they came out yesterday and they changed the valve at the street because it wouldn't shut. So the water was back feeding into the well system, which are, we cut the well off. And it was just making a big mess, and everybody in the world saw it, and I'm sorry, we wasted a lot of water, but it just, it just busted. I mean, we don't know what caused it. It's just one of those things. And we should have it back up and running by middle of next week. And that's really all I have. Unless y'all got any questions?
Any questions for UCNT?
Just one question. You have a Wi-Fi issue as well?
We did. We didn't have any Wi-Fi for probably three and a half weeks. And a couple of times it's been on and off, on and off, but for the most part, whatever the guy did, fixed us.
Fixed you.
But the phone line coming to the plant, now that may be an issue with police department and the dog pound. It got cut twenty-five years ago, and they spliced it right out, kind of in front, to the right of the treatment plant, and it's never been worth a flip since. Every time it rains, you got so much static, you can't hear. Sometimes when it's real quiet, you wonder, is the phone working? And it's been out three days, and we didn't even know it, but we sure got a lot done. Three days. But yeah, it is, it's an issue with the phone line. I hope the internet's gonna be back up and running because that was a miserable three weeks. Because everything you do has to be done now. All your reporting, all your, everything is on the computer. So anyway, hopefully that's better.
I've, I've seen leaks throughout the city. Like you said, it was twenty-four. There was a lot of water.
It was.
And it pretty much went all weekend.
It did. It busted Thursday, sometime between the time the guy checked the well that morning and about three o'clock that afternoon, it busted. I mean, I don't know what caused it. Any number of things. I just don't know. But it's, it was a pretty good sized hole. We'll figure it out later on, when we have time, how much water we actually lost. And we'll use that in the border audit because that was a lot of water. We got a lot of comments about that. We hope it doesn't happen like that again. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. That concludes our department here. I'm reporting of those accomplishments. We are now moving to our agenda items. Agenda item number one, considering approved the first written order, so approve the gas supply contract and supplemental contracts. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. All right, so it's been properly moved in second. Then we, have we considered and approved the first written order, so approve the gas supply contract? I see standing up here. Any discussions?
One.
Go ahead. You have some to say something?
No, I don't, Commissioners. I just wanted to be here and answer any questions. In the home stretch, there's only two things that we need to really do in the contracts. You're taking up now and then sending the termination, termination letter to the current supplier. And that, that's all I wanted to kind of mention. Sorry for the interruption.
Well, any questions? He's here. None? All right, any discussion? None? All right, let's proceed to voting. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
And if most of you cares, it is approved. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number two, considering approved change of order. Number one, from the two thousand twenty-three AM paving project. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Have we considered an approved change of order, number one? All right, any discussion?
If there are questions, Steve is available. Oh. Is there any questions regarding the change order?
So it looks like you're talking about eight, nine thousand dollars.
This particular case, there, there's basically two types of contracts that we usually enter into on these types of things. One is a lump sum contract where they just bid a lump sum, and that's the end of the contract where they use more or less materials. In this particular contract, which is same as we've been doing for years, is based on unit prices. Each line item, the unit price, and the engineers estimate like how much asphalt it's going to take and that type of thing. So when it get through, the actual usage may be more or less. In this case, it's more. So they actually use more asphalt than the engineer originally estimated it was going to take. So that's the reason for the.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, that's fine. Thank you for asking. Any questions? All right, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
All right, it's approved, change of order. Okay, all right. Agenda item number three, discussion, reducing the five for a bench warrant. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Have we, any discussion of reducing the five for a bench warrant? All right. Open for discussion.
I guess my question would be, I'm glad the judge is here today. I see him out there. My, my question would be, how many bench warrants, how many bench warrants per court session?
About thirty-one, thirty-two. About thirty-one. I would like to make sure.
Did you introduce yourself?
Yes.
No, no, the position, I'm sorry.
I'm Russell Wright. I'm Judge City Court Cordial.
Thank you.
I would like to make sure the commission understands how we get to a bench warrant. Because it's, it doesn't happen in every case. If you get a seatbelt violation, for instance, they don't show up to court, you don't get a bench warrant. But you have had a notice come to court from that citation, which is a court order. I mean, it's a subpoena. As I like to say, it's, it's not an invitation if you, if it doesn't get on TV. It's a subpoena and order of the court to be here. If you're not here on a traffic violation, which is about eighty percent of our cases, you don't get a bench warrant. We send you what we call a thirty day notice, which is a notice to you that you got this issue pending in the city court. Take care of it. If you don't do it within thirty days, we still don't issue a bench warrant. It goes to Division Driving Services. They send another letter saying take care of this matter. So you've had three notices to attend to that issue. When we do issue a bench warrant at first appearances, and we have a first appearance arraignment, second appearance trial, and the conditions for a bench warrant are different. At arraignment, we issue bench warrants on the more serious cases, not appearance. Possession cases, DUI cases, disorder conduct cases, that kind of thing. But eighty percent of the cases that come before us at first appearance are traffic cases. We never issue a bench warrant. On the second appearance, it is for trial. When you came and entered your not guilty plea, you received a notice from this court, and you signed an affidavit saying you understand that, when your court date is, what time it is. And if you do not show up for your trial date, that's a completely different matter. Because you're the only reason we came, that, that, to hear your case. We've had police officers subpoenaing, some of them have worked the night before. It's their day off. They came to court. We have officers from other agencies, from sheriffs on, state patrol, DOT. We may have lab people here. We may have an interpreter here, and they're all here because you said you wanted a bench trial. I mean, excuse me, try. In that case, we issue a warrant. In my experience, courts are going to get the amount of respect that they require, that they demand. And it's, it's my opinion that fine that we have right now appearance is not only appropriate, it may be a little bit less. I do know some courts where they don't issue a warrant. They just go and pick you up, and you sit in jail until the next term of court. That would cost us any of immense amount of money. We don't prefer to offer that. Also, quite frankly, I don't want to speak for the chief, but I would hate to know as a police officer, I was out there trying to arrest somebody for a fine that's going to be a little bit more than a seatbelt violation. I don't know where it is on the pecking order, but I think the enforcement of everyday warrants is pretty high up in situations where officers get hurt. So it would be my preference to leave the bench warrant fine where it is. Right. As a court, we're, we're an organ of the city. We're going to do whatever the city tells us to do with efficiency and good humor.
Any questions for the judges? Any more discussion with that? Chief, how do you see the issue? In the spirit of being thorough, you just mentioned, I'd like to have your take on it. I don't know how this vote going to come down.
I appreciate you allowing me to speak on this. The perception is in Cordial is that crime has risen, it's on the rise. And I can say that in the country or the nation, that crime has risen. In Cordial, that is just a perception. Crime has remained about the same for at least the last, the last numbers I pulled were about five years, six years. The numbers have remained generally the same. I fear that with this decision and other decisions that have been made, that that perception will be, you know, a reality. It will no longer be a perception. That crime will increase. Fines are in place to punish and to deter criminal behavior. And our officers work hard to enforce the laws, and I just fear, again, reducing these fines and punishments and penalties basically sends a message that, in my opinion, is not a positive message. It sends a message that I guess crime is, is, I guess, acceptable or, or in some, in some cases. My worry also is that ninety percent, and, and I have the numbers, so I can say ninety percent easily, of the citizens of Cordial are law-abiding citizens. And when you're reducing fines and punishments and things like that, I feel like you're, you're, you're sending a message to cater to the ten percent, the criminal element. You don't be, you're not in court unless you've committed a crime for the most part, unless you're a witness or something like that. You don't have to worry about signs, fines, and fees, and bench warrants, and things like that unless you've committed a criminal offense. My other worry is that reducing these fines, it shows that we're, we're tougher on dumping tires than we are on marijuana or that we are on not showing up to court. And I just think as a city, and this is a personal opinion, this is not the opinion of, I don't want to speak for anybody else, that I just think that that is not a good, a good thing to put out.
Hold up a question to you. Thank you for being candid with us. You said other decisions, and I had a question mark about that, but I think you answered that question. Are you talking about the marijuana policy as well? So your worries is that with lapsing of what we will. Are you talking about the marijuana policy as well? So your worries is that with lapsing of, well, we will probably term a label criminal, um, criminal offenses, we're banned, we're starting to lapse that and that's sending the wrong message.
It has ramifications more than just, I guess, on the offender or whatever you're, you're trying to accomplish with that. You know, our, our records management system is funded through citations. Um, so that could possibly be, uh, you know, a, a charge that we would have to pay. That's not the biggest issue. Uh, one of my biggest issues from police or law enforcement perspective is that marijuana is usually the gateway to other crimes. It's usually, uh, helps and it motivates other crimes. A lot of times, people that are, are high, I mean, you're talking about DUIs that we would then get. You're talking about other, uh, crimes that I feel like just being laxed on crime, we're catering to a population in the community that is the majority. Obviously, they're minority, and I feel like we need to cater towards the ninety percent that are law-abiding citizens.
Sure, my goodness.
Yes, ma'am.
It's amazing. While we're on the topic of the marijuana, this, um, ordinance, the new ordinance, um, it was brought to my attention, and since we have a judge here and the municipal court, of course, I wanna make sure, uh, because before what I was hearing is that if there was a charge, they, the option, or there was an option for that individual to have probation, which would remove that from their record. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There's certainly a way to go about that.
But what we have now, is it true that for every, since the fine is one hundred dollars every time, that, that probation is not an option? So for those who maybe later in life are going off to college or into the service, that, that will be on their record?
It's my understanding, uh, that the court only has the authority that the counts, the commission has authorized through that resolution. If probation is not mentioned in there, then the court does not have that authority. Because I, and I haven't fly-spect that, that resolution, but by understanding, it calls for a hundred dollar fine. That's it. If someone appears before me and says, I don't have the hundred dollars, I'm never gonna have the hundred dollars. What do I do if I don't have the authority to place an order of probation? I can only do what I've been, what the, what the commission has authorized me to do, what, what the state law has authorized me to do.
So in that case, if they don't have the hundred dollars, what would happen?
I would send them to talk to probation, and I would hope the probation could have impressed the funding of the necessity of having the hundred dollars.
I didn't come prepared to talk about this. I didn't have this provision for community services in the event you don't have a hundred dollars.
There, there's also, I'm not sure if the commission knows, but, but there's new bail bond guidelines. It doesn't go assigned or made first.
That's right.
One of them requires a cash bond, I think, for a second offense marijuana. So the position we're in now is we have a, we have a requirement for a cash bond at the same time when we get to court. We have a negative full fine. I think it ma- it kinda makes us look a little stupid. That's my position on the interval.
But again, without other options, then that charge or violation will appear on the record, say if a person is going off to?
There, there are things we can do. Uh, the court has an authority to do what we call a pre-trial intervention. Uh, there is a specific statute in Georgia called conditional discharge statute, which applies to first-time drug offenses. Uh, so there's things we can do, but I don't see it's where probation is included in that resolution.
Thank you.
Which we're, you know, um, we have to have these new ones conversations because sometimes when we think we're helping, um, the law is very complicated, uh, very, very complicated. Um, and sometimes when we think we're helping, people that were not thorough enough, we actually may be not down the long road. So, um, thank you all for being here, answering those questions. The matter under discussion right now is whether or not we're reducing the fine for bench warrants. And, um, the judge is here and he stated his position. He thinks it's probably, possibly too low. Um, in giving the nature of the differences of what can happen, it seems like there's no issue with traffic violations because of the, um, all the opportunities they have to show up, um, or what have you. Um, Commissioner Reeves, I think this is one of your things.
It is, and, and I'm looking at the fines, uh, for contempt of court fees, um, violent a hundred dollars every fifty, probate court two hundred dollars, Union City fifty, um, Forte County a hundred, South Fulton a hundred, Houston County, Warner Robins fifty dollars. So I'm still confused about why so, why it's too low in, in, in other cities or the highs I seen was based on what the information gathered here. The highs I seen is in front of you guys, is two hundred dollars.
Well, we're talking about two different things here. The, the bench warrant's different from contempt. But that's covered in your charter contempt. It's two hundred dollars, up to two hundred dollars in discretion of the court. It's, it's, uh, four thirteen B, the municipal court shall have authority to punish those in its presence for contempt. Providers such as punishment shall not exceed two hundred dollars or ten days in jail. So the judge is free to do two hundred or anything less than that.
So do we have any information about how much the bench warrants are in other comparable cities? Because some of these places right here, um, well, South Fulton's fairly new. Um, but there's a population difference and a tax base difference, too. So, um, I, I personally, um, city manager, I think you have something to say before I say this.
The only, uh, only thing I was gonna add to this is, is in some places, it is, you know, the contempt of court fee when they don't show up for court. And these are the fees that, um, you know, that is on this chart here. But also, there's a municipal court listserv and, um, Jackie has, uh, sent out a, a request, you know, for other cities who are near bench warrants, because of course, just like with the city of Cordial, we have to go through the open records, uh, process. And so we're waiting on additional information regarding, uh, bench warrants as well.
Thank you. Um, just after the hearing, even after we have, well, you talked about traffic violations and those things like that, and we, so we still average thirty per month with bench warrants, even after all of the opportunities they have or?
Oh, the only time you will receive a bench warrant on a traffic case is if you demand a trial and do not show up at that trial.
Okay, so that, that, okay, that makes, that's, that clears, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Judge Wright, I just want to be clear, um, regarding the bench warrant process. I know if they miss court, there's a thirty-day notice from the court, correct?
On, on a traffic case, at the arraignment stage, at the first appearance stage. At the trial stage, we go straight to the bench warrant if they don't show up.
But then after the thirty days, DDS will send a letter because they suspend their license, correct?
DDS will send them another notice, giving them additional time, and then there would be a license suspension.
Okay. But then even after those two thirty-day notices, then we still have individuals who do not show up for court.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So in, in, in that process, I guess, maybe we talk of traffic, then will DDS then send something back to you all? The, the, the person did come to court, well, you all, I guess you would know at that point they didn't show up, based on the suspension and everything else.
Yeah, after they give those final notes from DDS.
On a traffic case, that suspension will usually get their attention very quick.
Um, out, out of those, the ones who show up for bench warrant, how many of them are they citizens of Cordial? Because I've been here a few times and some of them are not. They're from other places.
Yeah, they're, um.
It, even if, if you, all your years of experience, you have to guess, I guess the amount of what percent. And, and, and the reason I'm asking this is because our goal is to be fair and balanced in a way to citizens of Cordial. Um, it's funny because places I go, they put no Cordial award in our tickets. And so that's been since I left here and went to West Georgia originally. Uh, I have a professor that, you know, uh, that, you know, got a ticket in Cordial and, uh, you know, the way things go is unfortunately, the goal is to deter crime. However, we live in a capitalist society, and somewhere along that line, the goal has not just to be, to deter, deter crime, but also as an income tax thing, and that's the part I don't like. I understand that's a necessity to cover costs and things to be done, and everything cannot come from taxes. So I ask that question because I'm a little less concerned about people coming through here, uh, getting hit with certain things versus our own people. Uh, so that's why I ask that.
It's about twenty percent out of town, the others.
Twenty percent about out of town. So that leaves about eighty percent Cordial residents. All right. Um, okay. All right. Yes, sir.
When it comes to some of our locals, I've had people reach out to me, and it's pretty much their responsibility because I've been in the courts. And I've, uh, heard the judges struck them that if you should move or change your address, you should notify them. And I think a lot of that is due to, uh, them not letting someone know that they have moved, uh, some of those, some of those warrants. So, so it's, it, it's one of the things, I know you can't hold a hand. I, I understand that. But like I said, a lot of these bench warrants came because someone has moved, uh, changed their address, and people has come to that place, they moved to another place. I mean, there's just a lot to say.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
The defendant needs, has to pay some kind of, um, accountability on board. Keeping up with, it's not my responsibility to know when you move or whatever, when you got the ticket. If, um, you know, your address is not the same, you can tell the officer and he'll write in. Um, so we'll have a current address to send to the lawyer, but it's not the court's responsibility to keep up with when someone moves.
Additionally, the court date is on the citation, so whether they moved or not, or their address is accurate, they still have no one to beat at court. Chairman, thanks. It's one of listening to everybody. There's a lot of administrative costs, obviously, in being able to issue bench warrants. And, uh, a lot of time, everybody takes, uh, from the sheriff's department, I mean, from the police department, sheriff's department, and, uh, our court system. So I think the bench warrant is fair where it is.
Thank you for that. Any more commentary?
And if we're responsible citizens, if we do the crime, you know, if I got a ticket, I know to be in court, then it's my responsibility to get it in court. Then I wouldn't get the two hundred dollar fine if I show up, or even call the court. Like she said, call the court. Contact us before they come to this issue. Then maybe we're gonna have a two hundred dollar fine at all their places.
Thank you. Any more commentary? Question. Here's why I went this, um, the topic that no one wants to talk about usually, that I don't mind talking about it because I have deeply studied the issue and been impacted my whole life by the issue, which is there's a racial component. I've heard our own police officer say that more crime happens on the west side or black, um, the black areas of the city. Statistically, research says that may not be the case when you're being deeper. Because some factors that also go hand in hand with crime is also on the west side of town. And it's almost a case of selection bias, because you also have more law enforcement presence. I went to UGA, Georgia Southern, West Georgia, um, predominantly white schools. And I can tell you in the halls and corners of those, a lot of things happen. I lived in other places, um, condos in Atlanta. And the things that I saw, and we're talking about high rises with a high monthly amount of state. And, and so I know personally that operating belief is not necessarily the case. So where I am, or what my mind goes to is, and as much as we can control, is almost that selection bias. And what happens when crime or there's a presence of law enforcement more concentrated in one area than another, and there's opportunity to catch more criminals in that area, then saying crime is, uh, it looks like a certain thing. And I think that merits, uh, our conversation about what we're charging for bench warrants. And I understand it's not an invitation. That's why I, I like to hear all sides and all things. Um, you know, I've, I've been tasked with, you know, he can't stand for people not to agree with him. I, I hear everything coming in. I think that there are, as I said time and time again, a policymaking, uh, democracy is deliberation. You hear all sides, and you come to a conclusion based on your experience, based on law, based on, you know, how you see things. Beliefs play a part in that as well. Um, so part of me is, and, and, and that's why I land with the, the amount, uh, or, or, you know, the struggle I have with, you know, the fees, also being promoted, it's hard to tell whether the point is to deter crime or to pay for things. And you have to balance the two. Um, now I do believe people pay money for what they wanna pay money for. I do have an issue with also some of them saying people who wear a legend cannot pay a certain fine, they can buy whatever they want. And so it's not an easy decision to make. But there is a, we need to think about all factors that play into this. And the concentration of presence of law enforcement is not gonna change overnight, and I'm not asking it to. But I do realize part of what we deal with in the criminal justice system, I've seen it because I've been working in courts since twenty thirteen. Um, and the selection bias almost is way on terminal, or what have you. So while police officers in the court deal with their side, but what I also look at is how you ever get there in the first place. Uh, statistically, I know, because I've worked with youth, is the suspension rate in schools are terrible, especially for African-American males. Now, when you're out of school, you find trouble. Uh, and the conviction rate for African-American males versus others, um, is way lower. You're talking about forty to fifty percent for white males, you're talking about seventy-five to eighty percent for black males. Same crime. So, again, my thing is to what the city can control, and as the judge says, you know, part of what it is is following the direction that this board sets. So this board does have authority to weigh all of that and make a decision based on what we believe is just fair and right. But those terms are hard to determine on a practical level, just fair and right. Um, so I don't know. Um, but also, the question is, I think we leaving, uh, pivotal factor out here. When we're talking about reducing the fine, what are we talking about reducing the fine to? Currently, it is how much?
Five hundred.
Five hundred. And what are, what are the proposal to? Five hundred. And what are, what are the proposal to reduce it to? I, I think that's partly if we're gonna vote on anything, I think that's part of it. Unless y'all wash your hands and say, we're not doing it, but I think i- if you, if your word is reducing it, we're talking about reducing it to, if it is to be reduced.
Probate, probate court is two hundred bucks. And, uh, and if it's five hundred dollars now, my, my signal would be to cut it in half.
Uh, now, these are not bench warrants.
Okay.
These, these are, uh, other things for contempt. We have a, a charter provision.
Okay, and you say the charter is, is two hundred?
Two hundred dollars, what it says.
It's two hundred?
Up to two hundred dollars.
For bench warrant?
No, no, no.
For contempt in court.
Contempt in court. Simply says what, for this, so this, the court, uh, can, uh, depending on circumstances, uh, maybe a contempt charge, fine, anything less than two hundred if they wanted to, because this is up to two hundred. Uh, here it is, I'll read it again.
It's a ceiling, not a floor, basically.
Yeah, municipal court should have authority to punish those that present for contempt, provide such punishment shall not exceed two hundred dollars or ten days in jail.
Ten, that's right.
It, it doesn't, charter doesn't really say anything about, um, a bench warrant. Uh, it says, or it says municipal court, it gives the authority to them, may compel the presence of all parties necessary to a proper disposal of each case by the issue of some of the subpoenas and warrants, which may be served as executed by any officer that's authorized by this charter. So it seems to give the authority to the court in my view, in what you have right now.
And in that authority, that also the amount?
It doesn't say, I, I, it didn't, the, the, the.
So it gives that discretion to the judge?
Yeah, I think that's right.
And in the state law, presumably, a s- a ceiling, so to speak, on how much it could be, there isn't any state law.
I don't know what that is for bench warrant.
So it's inherent authority of the court, and it's also by that way is the authority of this board to set a floor or ceiling. So.
If you decide to do it, it looks like to me, the proper way to do that would be to amend the charter by a home rule act, it's in there, uh, so that it would be in here. My view is it, it's best left to discretion of, of the court. Uh, because he can set something up to or, or, or in the amount. Seems like it's a relatively rare occurrence. I will point out, as, um, I think Wesley just pointed out, when you have a trial, as the chairman knows, it's all hands on deck. We've got policemen, we've got witnesses, we've got all kinds of people coming to court. As the judge eloquently pointed out, yeah, it's a expensive proposition, especially if the defendant doesn't show up. You gotta go back and do it again. So counsel needs to consider that. And the, the chairman's quite right, we're, we're here to do justice, not to make money, which is, uh, an important concept, so, um, to keep in mind with everything.
I have a question, chairman. And apparently, uh, perhaps we have been in contempt, of course, if we take care of it in the city of Cordill.
Bench?
A contempt of court and very confused difference.
Okay, five hundred, five hundred dollars fee.
Okay, the bench warrants, basically.
The bench warrants, basically. Approximately how many have we had within the last year?
You said about thirty a month, right?
And I understand some of these get this bid.
Right.
I mean, if we, if we don't just send people out there if they can't pay the five hundred, we don't send it. I usually go out there after forty dollars if they can't pay it, we'll let them out, um, because the city might be upset.
Right.
And a lot of times we do that with the same person three or four times, because they still come.
But do we still take them? We put them in the museum, right?
Oh, you have a physical proposition.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the problem with deter crime, it also costs to incarcerate, so.
Thirty five, not once a day.
But.
That's right.
Um, I think, I definitely agree with the state attorney, I think the discretion of the judge and a full moment of transparency. And I, I try to never let anything, like, make this, sometimes I don't want to do things up here because I felt I've been treated by people up here. But whatever need to be signed, whatever need to be done, I try not to make it too personal. Um, if we would have went back before a situation I had with the court, Judge, Jackie, you all had my full confidence. But when a situation happened with me and how the court decided to have, not even with me, with my questioning of what happened, how that would that work? And it asked me, I, I, I left the situation totally alone, I didn't come bother the court. Until that situation, I saw the process for myself. And once looking at the process myself, I had more questions. And then I was lied on, point blank, and, you know, uh, um, and I had to take, uh, the way I operate is if it's none of my business, I don't get involved with it until it becomes my business. And it became my business because as the chairman of the city, if someone said they were treating a family, then it, it became my business. And Jackie, though, I didn't come taking no sides, even though it was my family, I asked questions, which I always do. Um, but I saw the process of the court, and then I questioned, A, the diversity. I questioned, um, how it came to be that we had the personnel in the court that we had, I mean, contracted people, or what have you, and the decision was made, um, you know, how the solicitor and the defendant got there. Um, I tend to think that one reason that we are to appoint those people individually and not have the judge buying them, is because we need to have confidence in each one of those people. And make sure, the way I've worked, and I have not been liked sometimes, but I've been loved, I got contracts right now with court system that people may not like everything I say, but they know if I'm there at the table, I'm gonna be honest with them and I mean the best and good things are gonna happen. I just feel like it's too much, um. I feel like the agreement, there needs to be room for disagreement. Uh, there needs to be an independent vetting. Every time we, um, come here at the beginning of the year, we just re-appoint the same people without a firm evaluation on those people. Um, and so I struggle with letting it be the judge's discretion because I've had an unpleasant experience of dealing with the court on the side of, I don't believe, um, things were handled fair, to be honest. And, um, with that, in that one instance, you know, because I showed up as Josh Darson, but also the chairman. And I didn't expect to be treated no type of way, but I also didn't expect to be mistreated. And, um, that's kind of what happened. And, um, so I don't really have the full confidence of the court because of that experience. So I take heart and just let it be up to the discretion. When we have authority also to set parameters, so, um, but that's my piece in my end, because it's gonna leak the discussion, but it's one deserving because we heard that the concerns of the chief, we heard the concerns of the court, we hear the concerns of the citizens through their bo- through this body. And I think we ought to balance all of that. And, uh, if nothing else, I, I, I don't know, we can take it to a vote, Commissioner Reeves?
I, I want to say, I want to say this, and this be known, that, uh, I'm not here to cater to the ten percent, twenty percent, thirty, nor that. I'm here to cater to the citizens of Cordill, Georgia. And I answer to the people that come to me with their, with their issues, I don't see any small issues, I don't see any big issues, I just see issues. So I want to be known that if anybody come to me about a situation, uh, I ran for office and meet some of the same people, then I knock on their doors and ask them to support me, some of the same people, so if they have an issue, I'm most certainly gonna make it my issue. And if I'm being told that it's, it's one cause here, and why is it so high, high down in Cordill, Georgia? I came here and I asked the people, I asked the city manager, and I asked others to do the research and find out what was going on. Uh, this marijuana thing that I brought to this board, um, yeah, I, I did that, and I want to thank this commission for what they did with it. Um, I, I, I get it, you in law enforcement, it, you know, you, if you've been in law, in law enforcement for ten, fifteen, twenty years, hey, marijuana is against the law. I, I, I get it. But, uh, the reality of it is, I mean, there, there's places where it's legal, right here in the United States of America. So we most certainly did not invent, uh, reinvent the wheel with this, it's been done in other places. And that's what we do at times when we don't know, when we don't know, uh, whi- which way to go as a governing body. Uh, we reach out and we look out, we, we look at other cities who've done such, and, and that's what we do. Uh, that's what we've done, so we did, this is not something, this is not something, you know, the decriminalization of marijuana, this is not something, um, that Cordill is the first to do, you know, and so, and, and, and that's my take.
Any other statements, comments, questions? It was just a discussion, actually, so if there's no motion or anything about it, we shall proceed.
I would, I, I would like to table it until, uh, until, I mean, I, I would like to table it. I think there, I think we, we deserve some more discussion on it, because there is, uh, you got contempt, and we got bench warrant. Um, if it's at the judge's discretion, you know what, I, I don't want to table, I just make the motion that we leave it to the judge's discretion, as far as the bench warrant.
Um, I hope, but also, with you all, also get a pull something out and see what we're generating from those amounts, as far as financially. That's just. Yeah, just bench warrants, yeah. No, you don't have to adjourn your motion, but I'm, I'm just saying, I, for curiosity, say now, I would like to know that, what we're getting from that, because we have to take that into consideration too, all right?
Excuse me, chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Are those bearing, now, not all of them have to pay.
Right.
That, um, five hundred dollars, some of them are, are dismissed, it, it could have been in the hospital, couldn't see, and, and they don't have to pay. It, it, the, the warrant was just issued.
Right.
But it wasn't, um, tried to.
Right, and so I think that's why we commonly to have that information, okay, we're here at thirty per month, and then between some months, thirty-five other months, right, I get it. But then, look at who's actually paying and what they actually come to as far as impacting the budget. Uh, because if we set it to a certain amount, then more money gonna have to come from somewhere else also. And that's not good, so we got to balance those things. Um, so, yeah, um, yeah, but thank you for, all right, you, motion or no motion?
No motion.
All right, adjourn the motion, all right, I will.
Chairman, I make the motion to leave it at the judge's discretion.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Renner, I made a motion either at the judge's discretion, do we have a second? Motion dies without a second, all right. Um, all right, next is City Manager's report.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
City Manager's report for, just in July, I'm sorry, to make the, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, your vote matters. Uh, just want to send a reminder that, uh, today is Election Day from seven AM to seven PM. You will vote in your assigned precincts, for those who can vote, this is a runoff to a Chief Magistrate judge. So just wanted to bring that information to you. Updates and announcements, the Watermelon Festival Parade is, uh, June twenty-second, uh, eight AM. The parade lined up at South Gate Shopping Center, and nine AM, uh, the parade will begin and will travel from Fifteenth Avenue, uh, from Sixth Street to Owen Street. A planning commission meeting will be held on June twenty-eighth at ten AM here in the courtroom. And there is a ribbon cutting on June twenty-eighth at four PM for the new event center located at seven oh three, um, South Seventh Street, and the name of the event center is seven oh three Uptown. And then on July fifth, we will have White Works on the Flint at nine thirty PM. As, um, Maurice mentioned in his report, the monthly ministers meeting was held on June thirteenth. We had an increase in numbers, a great discussion. And, uh, again, they are planning several events relating to the year, we will bring additional information on those events. We also held the Propel meeting, uh, which Propel stands for Planning Rural Opportunities for Prosperity and Economic Leadership. We have three working groups, uh, focused on downtown housing and land use and youth enrichment. And with the downtown, uh, focus group, of course, the focus is on bus- business retention, uh, business development, uh, facade improvements, um, revitalization. And so regarding facade improvements, this commission will increase the funds for facade improvements. And two of the businesses, they have taken advantage of that. One is Southern Bells, the other is Bad Place, it's, uh, Bad Place, excuse me, is an event hall. And previously, they did not have an address or anything on the building, and so now they do have signage. And if you notice, right around the front here, uh, the awning is gone. And so, uh, part of that, uh, facade grant will be used for the awning. And so once we have that in place, we will bring a new photo. And so the businesses are taking advantage of the funds that are available to them. In terms of goals, there are just a few that I would like to highlight. Uh, under goal number two, revenue recovery. Again, we have increased the collection of the Lincoln property taxes. And we're also addressing, um, occupation tax in terms of non-renewals. And so with those increased efforts, as you could see from the audit report, those have led to an increase in fund balance. Uh, last year, we had about thirty days fund balance. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit that was just completed, the fund balance is at nine, ninety-seven days, which we're close to having that four-month fund balance, uh, that, uh, they are, uh, stating that we should have. And so we are moving forward, uh, in that area. In terms of goal number three, protect the city assets. Uh, this body approves the safety and accident review committee. And so again, uh, we thank you all for that, and, um, we will be moving forward with the safety and accident review committee. And a couple of other items, we had a meeting with the owners of the Swanee House. Uh, it was a good meeting, in-person meeting, and so there are some options that are being explored. And once we kind of go through those steps, then we will bring additional information to you. But the meeting went well, and we're looking for great things to happen there at the Swanee House. And the last item I have is just a simple termite agreement for national termite and pest control for approval for, uh, the Boys and Girls Club. Um, Ms. Julia Byron and her group, they have moved in and, and, uh, they are really, um, taking advantage of the opportunity that was afforded them. And so she is always just thanking this commission, uh, you know, for affording her the opportunity to utilize the building. And, uh, with that, just a reminder that we are closed tomorrow, but June tenth, um, on Wednesday, and then we'll reopen on Thursday. So that's all I have, and if I could, uh, request, uh, again, approval for the termite and pest agreement for the Boys and Girls Building.
All right, I got you on that one. Um, we're in on the Propel meeting. When are the PROPEL meetings?
The first Thursday of the month, uh, eight-thirty at the Power Commission. This one, uh, it was an all-day planning meeting, the last one it was held at South Georgia Taker. Normally, the meetings are the first Thursday of the month, eight-thirty at the Power Commission.
I had, um, encourage more people to go to those meetings. Because, um, originally, there was the application for the bigger opportunity meeting to get there. And so this PROPEL is opportunity to get there, it's a stepping stone. And, um, from the photos, representation matters. And I I just encourage more people to go to the PROPEL meetings. Because there's a lack in this city of several things. And people don't know that, and people not showing up and sharing what they need or how they see the situations. So, um, uh, if we can get that information, I know it's not a city thing, but they need the city's support to get this thing done. So, um, I met with Monica and, um, um, I don't know if he got his name, but he got, um.
Tim Powers.
Mr. Powers, yeah, Mr. Powers, um, about this some time ago. But I just encourage more citizens to show up and let their voices be heard about, you know, what can be done in the city and also just taking advantage of the resource that we have. It's a great stepping stone to the larger goal that we want to accomplish, uh, here in this, in the city. So I encourage more people, first Thursday, eight-thirty at the Power Commission, right? First, first Thursday every month, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may add to that again, we do have working groups because we're at next stage now. And so, uh, leading the effort for downtown is, of course, our main street director, Monica Renfro, and and I'm assisting her with that. And then with housing and land use, uh, Tim Powers from Planets First. And then youth enrichment, Monica Robertson, um, is leading the effort on that along with Maurice. Maurice is part of that youth enrichment, uh, group. So, uh, again, we have those working groups, so feel free to reach out to any of us as well if, you know, can't make it with ideas that you would like to share in these three, regarding these three focus areas.
Right, right. Will you send me more information on 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 those three areas and?
Yes.
Who's in charge? Thank you. All right, and also, uh, anything else, city manager?
Uh, no.
Uh, we have a motion to, um, a motion to, uh, what's the name of the termite county?
Uh, National Termite and Pest Control.
National Termite and Pest Control, do we have a motion approved?
So move.
All right, it's been properly moved, second, and we approve the agreement, the contract with National Termite Pest Control. All right, all right, all in favor, let me know about what's what I. And motion carries, agreement approved.
All right, thank you.
City attorney, do you have any?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, in the back of your packet, you've got for review only and ordinance. This is a, uh, polite tax ordinance that the city manager and I wanted to put forward for your consideration. Uh, we're always looking for some way to enhance our effort to get rid of blight. Now, what this does, upon inspection and a notice, it provides that you can increase, uh, the adverb rates on a piece of property, it's blighted up to seven mils. You don't have to do seven, you can do less than that if you want to, but that is the maximum provided by code, by by Georgia law. Uh, and then, uh, they have an opportunity, by the way, to appeal to a municipal court if they don't like that. Uh, and we'd have the burden with our field inspections of proving that it is in fact blighted. Once they fix it, however, it goes back to the original rate and they can apply for actually a tax break if they, uh, if they fix the property. So we'd like to kind of put this before you, if y'all don't mind reading it before we, next meeting, and then we can go forward. If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, because that's my bill.
I think that's a logistical thing, I think it was more sort of internalized than the back.
Was it?
Okay, it's in the back, okay, yes, okay, perfect, okay.
I had a red thing on the front.
This one, I find it, I go through it, so it's fine. All right, nice, so and I guess the purpose of that would be just a way to get blight up to date and a way back in to become below. So it gives an incentive of getting back on where it should be, but also, once you're back there, you reduce all the original mils, all the, okay.
You know, what what we do now, and all cities do, we have, uh, ordinance and we go out and cite them and do all sorts of things, report and that kind of thing. This is kind of a self-help thing, if you will, and we're gonna raise your taxes, but if you fix it, we don't have to do it and they can do it themselves and and hopefully it'd be one more tool in the city's, uh, toolbox to fix blight in our community.
Chairman, I guess my question on this right here, is there a way we could, um, somehow get the number of blighted houses? And based on that blighted houses, they already got back taxes, so I'm not sure increasing the tax on somebody that ain't paying taxes is necessarily the.
No, I don't think it can be used everywhere, I mean, you've got a lot of, um, uh.
Most of our blight people aren't paying taxes on anyway.
Well, they paying now.
They paying now. They're trying to pay now, they said nothing. All right, that's a good one. We did, we did implement that collection.
It doesn't work everywhere.
Yeah.
City manager, like you saw the goal, which ain't, no, we collecting more money now, from places that we haven't before.
That's fine, for payment, setting up payments for all.
Yeah.
And actually paying.
Being actually paying. Okay.
I think, uh, it's good because I think when you pay attention to something, you can do something about it if you have a will. And I think that's a testament to that. I think, you know, s- stuff has been paid attention to now, and I think that's the improvement. Whereas before it was not, so, um, yeah. And so I think you're working talent with that, you're paying now, it's an opportunity for them to take care of it and a way back in, so, yeah.
Chairman, y'all, as I understand it, have a, some landlords up here, uh, this would probably more likely, you know, apply in those cases. And they would have multiple holdings. I guess if you did this on a uniform way, that would make a big difference in getting those people to bring them up to code.
So in what we have going on, I read some of this, but not all of this. If they're making payments and set up a payment plan in this, would the military, if we implement this ordinance, go towards that or if that, or will it remain the same if they're on a payment plan?
Well, my guess, we're gonna have to be selective of who we do it to, it's individual pro-. If they're making payments and it's not blighted, my guess is we're not gonna use this.
Well, I think it's blighted, but they're making payments.
Well, then we could use it, so.
We could.
But I I believe, but it's it's site-specific, Mr. Chairman, you know, it's not something that.
Buildings downtown, some we, some that we have on Seventh Street and other areas.
Any further deliberation on blight ordinance? Any need for a second session?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll ask for a motion, uh, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes, sir. If I may. As you know, tomorrow we will be celebrating June tenth, twenty twenty-four. The city of Cordeon and the city of Cordeon did not have a special program, but I would like to tell you a little bit about June tenth. September eighteen sixty-two, the president was Abraham Lincoln, proclaiming that on January first, eighteen sixty-three, slavery would be abolished in this United States. And on January first, eighteen sixty-three, appropriation was made, slavery to be abolished in the greater United States. However, several states and cities did not get the message by travel on the express. Galveston, Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Florida, and a few states in Georgia did not recognize that slavery was abolished. So in eighteen sixty-five, June nineteenth, it was proclaimed the final end of slavery in the United States. So slavery really didn't end in eighteen sixty-three as proclaimed, it really event with June tenth, eighteen sixty-five. And today, I celebrate June tenth because I am a, I am a ancestor of slavery. I'm yours truly, Ward One, best of Bill Shepherd.
All right, at this time, uh, we'll like a motion to adjourn it.
So move.
It's been properly moved, that we adjourned its meeting, um, at ten forty-three AM, June eighteenth, and at ten forty-three AM, ten forty-three. All in favor, let me know about what's what I.